Good. I'd like to call this special call meeting to order for Independent School District 624. Before I ask to call the roll, just want to say that appreciate the fact that everybody would continue the meeting for Monday night regarding the governor's curfew so that we can finish the business of the month. So with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Here.
Allison, here.
Here.
New Master.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Rakan.
Here.
Here.
All right. Thank you all very much. Before we get into our first operational, our next operational item is what I should say. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazmicek. I believe he wanted to give an update on the week.
Yeah.
And we really appreciate that. Dr. Kazmicek.
All right. Thank you, Chair Malin, members of the board. Before we get into the regular business, I wanted to pause for a moment and just reflect on the week that's been. The last week has been challenging for our school community. Our world has again been shaken by the death of 20-year-old Dante Wright, who was shot and killed by police. I'm sensitive to the pain caused by death. I know that losing a loved one stays with you forever. So I want each of us to remember that each of the incidents we hear about in the news means that someone lost a brother, father, uncle, or friend, and the lives will forever be changed. Our team will continue to keep at the forefront of our minds the trauma that many Black, Indigenous, and people of color are experiencing at this time. And of course, we are anxiously awaiting resolution in the Chauvin trial. It is a tense time in our state's history, and we want to be there to support students and families. Our work this week has been difficult, but anti-racism and equity is important work, and the magnitude of this moment can't be lost. If we believe that change starts with me, we must each look into our hearts and minds to consider what we as an individual, school, and community can do to advance anti-racism work and ensure that each of our students and neighbors feels respected, supported, and valued. We have started work towards redesigning our schools following an equity audit that found systemic problems, but that work has not progressed quickly enough, and we have not yet worked closely enough with our community. I've asked Dr. Marcellus Davis and Dr. Allison Gillespie to provide a brief overview of our overall work, as well as an update on work that has been done in recent days. So, Dr. Gillespie and Dr. Davis, would you mind probably more so focusing on the last few days and where we've been?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just wrote this. It is important to note that this has been a very difficult week. Not difficult due to the daily trials and tribulations of being a district administrator, rather due to experiencing a herd of students and families due to a moderate of events within our schools, the Chauvin trial, and having to explain to youth and myself of another murder, of the murder of Dante Wright in our community. I have been encouraged with the work that has started with student leaders who are committed to the eradication in partnership with the administration within our district. The students are focused on creating two action plans, one for South, one, well, one actually, just one, that's aligned between South and North. One short term and one long term goals to help eradicate and expedite the work that's already been happening towards our equity work within our district. So, we have committed young people that have stayed after school today. They began their work yesterday throughout the day. In collaboration, we're committed with administrators. Tiffany has been there. We will continue our work next week, but we are hopeful. In the words of Dr. K., he has been very committed in saying that we are hopeful that we have the talent with our scholars, with our parents, and our community members, with our school board, with other administrators, to do the work that's necessary to eradicate racism in our community and to deepen our schools and to deepen our equity work. So with that, I will pass it on to my colleague, who will explain how some of her work that she's leading with teaching and learning will deepen the work. Get a protocol.
Good afternoon. I want to sincerely say that I understand my role in our district. I'm committed to action, and I promised our kids that when I heard their voices, they wouldn't just be speaking, that I would move. And that is what I have done this week. I am not someone who is out front in this current role, so I've been supporting our buildings, and I have spent time investigating what I heard from our students. And so, first and foremost, the students talked of lessons that occurred in our schools that should never have occurred, and I issued a directive that they're done immediately and that we need to do an audit and figure out how they happened. And so, we're working on that and working through supporting our principals and educators to look at our standards and make sure that we, our curriculum continues to be responsive to our students, but it's not done so in a way that is racist and creates harm to our students. And so, that is one action that we've done this week. I've also worked really closely in investigating the students' report of our district following a three-strikes process with, in regards to hate speech. That is not a practice that we have, nor has it played out in consequences. We absolutely apply a variety of different consequences based on the different discipline we have. However, if our students are feeling that in our schools, we need to find out why and remedy that and figure out what the disconnect is. And so, that's what we're working on right now. I'm still investigating, talking with staff and students, and figuring out exactly where the disconnect is. However, one thing is, we are going to implement a centralized reporting system for incidents of race, racism, or excuse me, racism, discrimination, and bias, much like we have for bullying in our school district. And so, when an incident is reported, it immediately goes to my assistant. She alerts the principal and myself, and we have a protocol on how we're able to centralize the response to that. While that's happening, we'll be able to look really around the consistency of our follow-up, how we connect with families, our community, students, provide professional development for our leaders and our staff, and make sure that we really are having a more consistent response and one that students see change. Because when I hear students say, "You're doing nothing," really what they're saying is, "Nothing's changing," and that's not okay, and it needs to change. And so, that's what we have been working on this week. Additionally, our leaders have been engaged in professional development around being culturally responsive leaders for quite some time now, and we're at a spot where our leaders need one-on-one coaching. This has been really, really difficult. I see people who are committed, and I see people who don't want to make an error. And so, I'm working with some local consultants to figure out what that could look like for all of us as we continue to move forward, being and committed to being the district that we know we can be and understanding our response. And then looking into creative ways around how can we continue to partner with our community and our students, school board leaders, district leaders, to implement rapid change? Because we've been engaged in a lot of systemic change, but again, what I heard from our students is that they're not feeling it in their daily experience. And so, how can we implement significant change, but that's felt immediately so that while the system is changing, and that'll get faster, that the two meet in the middle and change the experience for our students? So, I'm proud of our work this week. This week has been extremely hard. Our student leadership, we hear you, and we're moving. It's not just that we hear you, we are moving.
Thank you.
Dr. K., does that conclude the wrap?
That's all we have.
So, if you, can we open it up for any questions? And just to make sure, anybody has any questions? Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Any, Ms. Ellison?
I'm wondering if there'll be a board training, which will respond to that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if that's the wish of the board, absolutely, we would, we would. That's been part of our communication is that we, again, we're all in this, and we all need to continue growing. So, yes, absolutely. And I know that's a desire from all of you, so.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, just playing off from, we're following up on what Ms. Ellison's question was. Dr. K., you had mentioned that it starts with you, change. And quite frankly, I want to, I guess, clarify that it starts with us, with the board, all the way down.
Yeah, Mr. Chapman, let me clarify. When I said, "Change starts with me," I did not mean me. I meant, quote-unquote, "It starts with me," meaning all of us.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I meant. That's what I meant by that.
Yep.
And I know I have a role, but we all do, and that, so that was not meant to be that it starts here at all. Okay? I just want, yeah, thank you. That's not what I meant.
Thank you for that. And I'm glad to hear that there's an audit that's taking place, or going to take place, because, again, you know, without belaboring the point, what we heard the other night, Monday night, was extremely troubling in terms of this whole three-strikes, you're out type thing and all of that. You know, if there's been any basis and any merit to that, which I have no reason to doubt, I think we need to know what happened and why, and what's going to be done to, again, correct it all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Others? Ms. Thompson?
I'd just like to make a point of clarification in the work that we're doing. And we, and I understand, and I am fully committed to our BIPOC students and our marginalized student population, but I want to ensure, as a person of color myself, that when I, when I think of this work and what needs to happen, I want to say that we need to ensure that we are helping all of our students, right? Because our white students also have felt traumatized in this, in this horrific event that has occurred in our district and things that have happened in this last week. And we need to make sure that the conversations that are taking place, and I'm sure they are, are all of our students coming together and learning from each other so that they can find commonality between each other and that they can connect and understand that they all have their own pain and trauma that they endure in their lives, no matter who they are. And so, when they can look at each other and see that they have things in common, they may be completely different, but we all want the same goals, I would think. And that is that everybody feels safe and comfortable in our schools, no matter who they are. And that's just what I would say.
Thank you. Other, anybody else? Okay. Oh, sorry, Ms. Boyd.
I just have a question. So, my youngest goes to Central, and Mrs. Peterson sent out an email about some of the work that they're doing. It's Central, and some of the meeting groups, I was just trying to look up the email, and I'm not finding it fast enough, but I don't know if the term was healing circle. I may be saying that wrong, but it was, it was an open invitation for the students to get together to discuss. I don't know who's facilitating it, but I was wondering if you had some information on that, and if, if that works, is that something we can look at using at North and South Campus and maybe community at large?
Yes, great question. Thank you for that. I want to say that prior to the events that took place with the Instagram post, racist Instagram posts and racist terroristic threats, we had already been, we being, the cultural liaisons, had already been planning, how can we try to quell the atmosphere that is becoming increasingly more and more on a daily basis racially very tense? We knew that the Chauvin trial was in process and could conclude at any point, so we really wanted to start priming our community, all four, all four schools, students in particular, and how we could deal with this within our space. And that only wasn't reserved for students, but it was also for staff as well. But due to that event, that event being the post, the Instagram post, it just has been accelerated. So, we are extending it to all four schools.
Because the only place I've seen it come out is for Central.
Yep.
Obviously, I wouldn't get it for Sunrise, but I would get it for South Campus.
Yep. We are, we, we actually are on Monday, Sunrise as well, and we are planning to be a South and North. We understand the severity and the urgency and immediacy of responding to the needs of our students, and part of that is healing circles. So, like I said, it's just been expedited due to our current situation, but it was already in motion due to the overall climate around racial tension and hurt around races.
Mr. Chapman?
Dr. Davis, or Dr. K., or Dr. Gillespie, if you could speak a little more on the steps that are being taken to prevent reprisal and retaliation in protecting our students primarily of color. I mean, anybody could be hurt in this whole thing, white or any other color, but I guess I'm most concerned at this point as to any retaliatory actions that may be taken against our students of color, and what is, you know, by other students, white students in particular, and what's being done?
I would say, and I don't think, we can go back and forth, I would say that we have really tried to support our leaders and get in a safe environment again in our schools. Presence, hallway presence, not in a hallway presence of a security-type of version, but one that's really intrusive to checking in with students, say, "How you doing?" to a different degree than it was because, after the situation of the cities. So, really being intrusive, really being visible, hyper-visible, hyper-communicative to our students, just checking in, trying to see what they need in a different way. I think yesterday, we probably had an additional 20 to 30 staff from multiple departments supporting in our high schools. Why? Because we just wanted to support our students. We wanted to create a safe environment for everybody.
And if there is a specific concern that students have or we have, we work with the students and families to develop a safety plan. And so, that can include having an adult more closely shadow, alternative passing times, work through restorative circles and restorative healing circles. You know, we've talked about different ways to make sure that, how can we bring school back or to a new, not even back, to a new environment that feels safe for our students and that we can move to learning. And so, it's a combination of all of those things and really supporting our building leaders and counselors and everyone that are working to support the students. But that positive adult presence really matters in terms of getting us back to learning, and it really is a testimony to all the people we work with, because our schools are absolutely wrapped around in terms of presence of people that we're trying to infuse joy into our schools and show that we're there to support our kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Newmaster?
I would just support what everyone's been saying, but I've been having conversations about the, this is not sudden, this is not happening just now, and as people testify too, graduates in the 90s, and they're busy talking about that, and, and the most important thing, and I heard this from more than one, I mean, I have two graduates in my home of, what, they're 93 and 97, and they have friends that have been talking. And they talk about the people that were that friendly backup in the hall, and how important it was to have that teacher who had bad ears. And I mean, the kind of hearing that hears that sub-vocalized crap that the kids would hear in the hallway on a daily basis. How important that is, how important it is to be acknowledged. And our teachers play such a huge role, because they're, they're there every single day knowing those kids. And it's your other staff, too, whether it's the media center, what I knew people for four years instead of two passing through or whatever. But it, the adults make a huge difference. And not to worry that you're saying it right or wrong, it's good to know the vocabulary you're using with your BIPOC kids, but just be there and care, and they remember 25 years later who did. And it made a difference. You felt a little safer in somebody's hallway. So, it's important, and I know we can do it with our staff. Change the feeling.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Thompson?
One more question, I guess, and maybe a point of clarification. I'm sure in this work, we have our counselors and our social workers involved in supporting our students. And I mean, the trauma that happened in this room on Monday night was some of the heaviest I have been in the room while it is occurring, and I was saddened that we didn't have that support here at that time, because it was needed and necessary. What are we doing as far as bringing our community like our parents? And we've gotten so many emails on this where parents are screaming for help and demanding action and immediate results. And I know we can't fix it with a blink of an eye. It would be wonderful if we could, but we can't. And I know we're doing the work, and I know we're committed, and I'm thankful to be here in this space with all of the people I've worked with and the equity work we are doing. And I am hopeful for the future of our district. Are we getting ready to bring, I mean, I know it's COVID, and there's so many complications with that, but are we finding ways that we can bring community together to have conversations with these families, with adults, and of all of our students, right, who, no matter what, have things that they would want to share and be able to say in a space that could be safe for everybody?
Well, we absolutely are, and we heard from parents right away that wanted to continue having a community town hall and wanted to continue having that conversation. And so, we met as a teaching and learning system, which really encompasses the majority of our departments. And so, Dr. Davis and Tim Maurer, Community Services, have worked closely, and I'll let Dr. Davis talk more about all the different things, but absolutely. And I think it's really important to continue to lean into the fact that we absolutely own our responsibility, but we need help. This is a community, it's going to continue, and unless we come together as a community, and anything we can do, we need partners. And I think it's, it's really easy to turn on each other when it's really emotional, and, and we have to come together for our kids. And so, I just want to make sure that we keep that at the forefront. And Dr. Davis and Tim Maurer have done some really great things.
Thank you for the question. School Board Member Thompson. Let me take this down. It's a little hot in there. To respond to your question, first and foremost, we want to make sure that we maintain the safety of our children. And, and we are not trying to do that exclusively. We're trying to do that in a partnership. We have been collaborating in multiple ways, and we understand this. I was once told in my conditioning as an administrator that schools are a microcosm of society, and what is happening in society is going to happen in schools and vice versa. So, with that understanding, we understand that we own our responsibilities. We believe that racism is real in our school district, as well as we believe it is in our community. So, individuals like Tim Maurer, connecting with different organizations like the Many Faces Organizations, really trying to identify members that we can work with and the religious fields, as well as other nonprofit organizations that are doing this work in our community so that we can do it collaboratively. Because it's not just, you do it in the school district, and you set it with everything. Our students have told us that they're not only getting it here, but they're also getting it in our communities. So, we want to make sure that we're working with both at the same time. But at the forefront is our working with our students and working with our parents. There have been some discussions about potentially putting together some community forums to hear the needs and concerns of our parents. Most recently, I was in a parent conversation last night where there's organizing going to figure out how we can start some conversations. So, the work at multiple levels, very comprehensive of working with our parents, as well as working with our organizations in the community who are committed to addressing racism in our community and eradicated in the community, as well as partner, partnering with us to do it in our community, our internal school district. It's a daily progress. The work is in progress. It was already established, but we're just doing to continue it to what we were doing, and we're going to accelerate it in partnership with our community, in particular, our parents.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Others? All right. Thank you all very much for the update, and we look forward to continuing to get updates as this moves on. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the action on the school's start time and dismissal times. Dr. Kazmicek?
All right. Thank you, Chair Malin, members of the board. So, I think we can advance one. We have the, yeah, so we'll just, we'll put it up. So, this is the, this is the recommendation, and this is not, and this is, this was the original recommendation back when we started this conversation. And I'm just going to, again, talk through the key elements, the key factors driving this change. And I'll try to be brief. But, so, the recommendation aligns with our school district strategic plan. We will provide expanding access to a broad range of opportunities for students. Specific result 5A, academic scheduling is critical to the social and emotional wellbeing of each student. And we would evaluate and revise start times of elementary, middle, and high schools using evidence-based best practices. The recommendation before you aligns with research on adolescent sleep. The recommended change is consistent with the commitment we made to the city of White Bear Lake and the current White Bear Lake area high school north campus neighborhood residents to prioritize the mitigation of traffic impact. And we know from a, from a very comprehensive traffic study that a start time of 8:30 or later for the high school is going to be essential. And the, the recommended change allows the district to run a more efficient three-tier transportation system, and we end up, we're estimating approximately $600,000 in savings per year. So, I won't read through the, I won't read through the times, but that's the, that's it upfront. So, the recommended, recommended action is that we approve the start, the school's start and dismissal times for the 2021, 2022 school year as recommended.
Thank you, Dr. Kazmicek. So, I think the best way to do this would be, I'm going to open it up to questions and allow board members to ask questions, and then I will, after that, I will ask for a recommendation, or I will ask for a motion to, to vote on the recommended action or on the action. So, let's start and just allow them to, allow members to ask questions. Is there any, anybody have any questions regarding the proposed changes? Dr. Rakan?
Okay. My first question would be, who have we talked to that have made this change, and how they, how was their transition then? Well, yeah, several of us have talked to different school districts based on our particular area of oversight. I've worked, I've lived through this before. I've had conversations with Wayzetta. You know, I've had, I've had conversations with, you know, other districts that have, you know, not as extensive as with Wayzetta, but, you know, Mountain View and others. And I know other, other different portions or departments of our district have reached out to, to, as they plan for, for the change. So, yeah, we've reached out to other districts, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize, Dr. Newmaster. I did see your hand first, and I just, my mind skipped, so I apologize for the little lapse in memory there. But, Dr. Newmaster?
And you're just going alphabetical. Our hand comes from, that was automatic, I'm sure. And I will note, I'm looking at my list of when different people start. Wayzetta does start at 8:30 with their elementary, and I'm sure our folks would be thrilled if that's when our kids were going to start. They went, says, to 8:30. I don't know what they were at before, later. I guess my questions are going to be the questions that have been sent to me, and I have four basic areas, and I've got it down. I just align each, so I won't take up any time. But I did get 28 emails this week alone. I'm not talking about the ones I got before. And you know me, I copy them down, I save them forever. And I went through and read just to get a summary of the questions that people think, or are issues that they really feel haven't been dealt with yet. They would love to have some answers. A lot of the families, the majority of the 28 that were supportive, I mean, or opposing the early, early elementary start, there, there were five that were supportive of it, and I had 28 that sent emails that said, "We have big questions about..." And I had 28 that sent emails that said, we have big questions about this. And a common one was that the first they heard any detailed plan was the 21st of February. And I went back and looked, and that was the first time the elementary times came out. And, and they feel this is short notice. It gives little time to plan alternative school district changes or other after-school plans and/or a survey to go out. So there's a whole lot of people that feel they haven't had time. And a lot of people talked about the lack of equity and that the burden was on marginalized or middle income, lower-middle income families that don't qualify for free lunch, but they sure can't afford extra daycare. And now there will be a long time in the afternoon and their siblings aren't available. And I know I asked this question the first time. What survey have we done of the district elementary families that asks who relies on sibling care? And I'm sure Community Services, that would be a good thing to know. We don't know what the hulking beast is out there. But from the number of people that talked about it, and more than one said, the cost of the proposed slot that has to have daycare is impacting us far more than the fact we voted for an increased property tax. Because that's twice a year and it, it didn't go up that much. But the increased daycare would be more than that was every month. So they, they were really looking and saying, the impact of this is huge. Several, you know, they really talked about the equity. They also said they feel we're an outlier, outlier, that our neighboring districts may, may benefit from this, but they like White Bear. They really don't want to have to leave. And many, almost all of them noted the safety concerns. And even if we cut it down to two months of dark, when the sidewalks aren't cleared and the streets aren't shoveled, that's tough for little ones. So there were other questions. And that was middle school kids mostly, their families that participate in sports and club sports and church activities. And they all start earlier. So they said it's going to impact a whole lot of activities. But the big issues were financial and equity and safety. And how much surveying have we done? That's my questions.
We did not conduct the survey of our elementary staff. We have, we have certainly elicited feedback. We held a listening session, an informational session. But we've taken phone calls, we've taken emails, and we responded. And, you know, we, we have a very robust website with a lot of information. And so I think a lot of the things you're bringing up have been, have been answered. So I don't know if you have like a specific, like, other than was there a, a specific survey to elementary families?
Yes, that's what they asked. They said, Mom, we did that. So they wanted to know, did we? I don't know.
No, we did not.
It's been too, not quite too much since the hours came out. So I, I don't know how much hard data we have. And I do know that people didn't attend. And I said that in a response to somebody. You had the program on the 30th of March. It was, you know, maybe a handful of elementary parents came. Some said, we were watching it at home, but we couldn't submit questions. So I don't know if you have a count of how many people logged in to watch it. But I just think people felt...
I think it was about 40.
Well, and again, that's kind of an equity thing. How many people are home? How many people have good Wi-Fi? I'm, I'm just wondering, how much input do we have from the vast? Do we have 4,000 elementary kids? Something like that? It's a, it's a lot of our student population impacted. Those are the questions I keep getting. And I didn't count people that sent me emails the first time around. Most of them just suddenly got it at the end of March and figured out what was coming. Those are my questions. And the big one is, the, the sibling care was a big one, the financial piece of it. And the amount of time that little kids have with their families if they have to go to bed at seven o'clock. The statement was made that little kids, their sleep time is easily changed. Well, maybe you can kind of tell them to go to bed when you can't tell your teen to go to bed. That's a lot harder. But they still need, according to all those studies I read through again, they still need 10 to 12 hours of sleep. So they really do have to go to bed early if they're getting up that early.
Yep.
I don't know how that's answered. I didn't try to answer them. I just sent the link to everything that was on the webpage.
Yep. Again, I don't, are, are you asking me to answer that particular question about elementary? Because I, again, the, at the informational session, the, the experts we brought in talked about that and that the sleep is malleable for elementary students. That at the age of 11 or 12, things change for children significantly. And that's when it no longer becomes malleable.
But they still need to sleep.
Absolutely. Yep, no one's questioning that.
Is that all you have, Dr. Newmaster?
There's no answer to some of this. It's just a difficult choice.
Okay.
And the other specific question that people asked that was specific, because you asked for specifics, they wanted to know, what are some, what's some of the data on the various scenarios? Was there any way to shift it differently?
Yeah, and we looked at many different scenarios. We looked at, you know, if we, ideally, we could shift elementary a little bit later. If we could shift middle school a little bit earlier. But any, basically, any shift with what you see is going to move everything. It's going to be the entire system that shifts. So, you know, if we took it and rotated it 15 minutes, then you would just change everything by 15 minutes. So then, you know, elementary could potentially be eight o'clock, but then middle school would be 9:30. And, and then high school would be, you know, nine o'clock at South Campus. So that, that's, that's what would happen. There isn't, there isn't another scenario that, like, I know one, one scenario we ran, it's not realistic to do this. We have a three-tier system. If we went to a two-tier system, so we could eliminate one of those, one of those time slots where we have to, we have to have three start times essentially, you know, roughly three. If we went to roughly two, we would have to go to a two-tier system. That means we'd have to add a lot of buses. And I think the number was 28 buses to our fleet in order to pull off a two-tier system so that, you know, then we can have like an eight o'clock time slot and a nine o'clock time slot. That's not realistic for us to do. But we certainly looked at that. And we certainly looked at, you know, we looked at a 7:35 elementary start. We looked at, if you look at an eight o'clock start. But again, everything has to shift then with what, what you have there. Yes, we looked at many, many different scenarios. This is where we've landed, taking into account many, many, many factors. And this is the, this is the recommendation before you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bulley.
So I just wanted to maybe just make a couple of points. One, for me, for my family's daily lives doesn't work the greatest for us. But that's, that's just kind of how it rolls. And when it comes to, everyone's got their own specific circumstance. I've got my circumstances that this doesn't lead itself to be the best for. I've heard from, I, mine's more 50/50. I've heard from about 50% that said, oh, my God, I no longer have to do childcare from 6:00 AM till 9:00 AM. Thank you. And then I've heard the other side. But I've really heard a consistent 50/50 for and against. And I haven't heard much from high school. Everyone at the high school level seems to agree that this is how we need to do it. Mostly what we initially started hearing was from middle school. And it was almost completely middle school. And it was barely any families. It was mainly staff. So that was the first wave of everything we received. And then when all this stuff became real and people started realizing that their school times are potentially going to change, then we started hearing from more of the elementary and then some of the parents from the middle school. I get that this feels like it's been, it may feel like this came out of nowhere, but it's been in the process for a long time. I mean, we had 200 community members in 2017 and 18 when we were coming up with the strategic plan. And this is specifically, not these times, but these specific things were determined to be part of our strategic plan going forward was to look at the research and to adjust our start and stop times based on the research. What I keep going back to is, if I've got 50/50, the only thing I can rely on is the data. And if everything that I've read, at least 90% of what I've read, says at each and every one of these levels that this type of a system works better, then that's what I have to go by. Because I can't go off of my circumstances. That isn't fair to anybody else. And I can't go off of your particular circumstances because then that's not fair to the rest of you. So this whole year has been follow the science, follow the data. That's what I'm looking at when I'm looking at this. Because I can go down the rabbit hole with many people and feel bad about their circumstances. But equity and a lot of this stuff is in the behind, in the eye of the beholder. What's equitable for you in terms of this, because you don't have to pay for childcare, ends up not being equitable for somebody else. And a lot of this, in, in my particular neighborhood, I was the house that when the kids, because the bus stop was right there in front of my house when it was raining, when it was snowing. If kids needed somebody out there, I was the one that was out there. But the parents contacted me. And the parents came and talked to me about it. I said, yeah, I'll open up my garage. Everyone can stand in here. Everybody's welcome. But that was a conversation between parents. Some of this can be solved by some of these neighborhoods. Because we all know where the bus stops are. I mean, it stops there every day. So a lot of this could be solved with, at least somewhat, getting together with our different community members in our particular neighborhoods and saying, hey, what can we do to help? I'm here, what can I do to help? No, you're not here, what can I do to help you? Because we can't, as a school district, we can't make this perfect for everybody. It's never going to be perfect for everybody. So bottom line, everything we've read, 90%, not everything, has said that this type of a system, for these types of hours, for these different ages, follows the science. And I've done it all year, and I'm going to continue to do so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bulley. Other questions, comments? Ms. Thompson?
I was, you know, originally when I heard this being proposed, I was very excited because I have long been a proponent for letting our older students have a later start time. I, however, have an issue with the middle school time. It's too late. It's too late. It's going to be hot in the buildings, for one thing, as the summer and the fall and all those months go. Our students are going to, I, I think this is going to cause more division in our community as it rolls out and it, and it plays out. And we discover that families are now going to not have anybody to support their little kids who are coming home early. And not everybody has a neighbor that they can talk to. You know, this whole last week has shown us how divided we are as a people. So you might live in a neighborhood that you don't feel comfortable talking to any of your neighbors. Or none of your neighbors are home because they all work. I have looked into this. I have read the research. I don't have any research or data that says that middle school starting and ending at that time is going to be beneficial to our middle school students. I, myself, my mom stayed home when I was little. We didn't have the money to afford another vehicle. She had asthma and health issues. And, and she tried to work in different factories and it never played out well. She ended up in the hospital sick and blah, blah, blah. She went without eating because we couldn't often afford food enough to feed everyone in the house. So she made sure we ate. And then my father ate because he had to work. And she sacrificed her own nutritional needs for us. In our strategic plan, we have two statements. One says we will foster community engagement and partnerships. And one says that we will engage families as partners in the education of their children. This is fast. This whole year has been one trauma after another. This is happening too fast. I understand we need to save money, but we're going to save money so that we do better. But it'll be at the burden of other families in our district who don't have that opportunity to cut things out of their budget. And if they do cut it out of their budget, it tends to be food. Or it tends to be, well, now we can't pay this bill. So now the lights aren't on at home. Or we don't have internet at home. So our kids, I mean, we've learned what this pandemic has done to our marginalized families. And, and when we talk about equity, we have to remember that economics is part of that. Right? Economically, our families are just as diverse as we are in our ethnicities and our racial and all of that stuff. I really want this, I really want our older students to have this. I, I know the science says it's important for them. I understand that. But I have an issue with this middle school. It is going to cause families who are already suffering to suffer more. And, and, you know, I could read all the questions that parents have sent us. And it is, I believe that, you know, for, I feel it's like every two or three that say I'm against this, I get one that comes and that says they're for it. It, it has been probably one of the most evened-out communications we've gotten from community members on this. But I feel like so much stuff is happening in people's lives that they weren't able to attend the thing on March 30th. Or they weren't safe to come into a building on March 30th. Or maybe they were working because some families work two, three jobs. And their kids are home alone for innumerable amount of hours because their families are out working. I would like to see that we relook at this. I'm not suggesting that we can afford to put buses back into our system because we all know what the budget says. If families out there listen today to our discussions, I would say that they need to contact their representatives and tell them that we need fully funded public education because it would solve all of this. We could go to a two-tier system. In North Dakota, they've been doing this for years. Their schools start, high school and middle school pretty much start at about the same time. Their kids get to sleep in a little bit. They start at about 8:30. And the little ones start at the same time, the nine o'clock time that our kids start at now. If there's any way we could move our elementary students to the later time, which I also know isn't going to satisfy everybody. My, I have a child who went to before-school and after-school care when we were working. It's not ideal, but for the families who are privileged to be able to afford that. And, and my privilege in being able to afford that was barely. Like, it affected our budget drastically. And we had to be very careful of how and what we spent money on. But we were able to make it work. But there are families who can't. There, there isn't a penny that they have available to make it work. So I just, I see an issue with the middle school being late. And so many kids in middle school go home and take care of their younger siblings. And high school students oftentimes in those families don't because they go to work, because they have to earn income, because they don't have a choice. So they don't get to go home and help out with the family if, you know, because there are other needs that they also participate in the budget of their household that they live in. So I don't really have a question because I don't think there is like, there isn't one question to this. I feel like maybe we need more time. And I know we don't really have the time because I don't, you know, if, if we don't do this, the budget is going to be affected. And something else is going to suffer because of it. So it is another tough decision in a year full of tough decisions. And I guess I don't have a question. I just felt I had to say that.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Anybody else? I, I'm going to get back to you. I'm going to let Ms. Ellison go and then I'll come back to you.
I, I agree with Ms. Thompson that this is just another hard decision in a year of really hard decisions. And I guess it comes down to how we make decisions in this district. Would it be ideal to take more time? Would it be ideal to take more time? Yeah. But do we have the time? Do we have the ability to make a systemic change? And this is a systemic change, based in research, based in scientific research, which is where I agree with Ms. Beloit, that all year long, we've been using the science. This systemic change will be unequally difficult and unequally better for everybody, with 8,500 kids in the district. And it, the responses that we've gotten over email, I, I agree again with Ms. Thompson, it's been really 50/50. It makes me wonder who we're not hearing from, and that the fact that there are people we're not hearing from, they, do they think this is okay? I am the only one on the board with elementary kids. I've got three. They're in the corner, over there, on iPads, because I had to go pick them up after school. And we are lower-middle class. Like, this would be, this will be difficult on our family. My husband lost his job after COVID, and, but how many individual scenarios are we talking about, as opposed to making a decision for an entire system? Which, like it or not, number one is our education of our kids, like, all of our kids go to school. Most of them do activities, too, but all of them go to school. That also includes the budget, which is the worst thing to have to talk about when talking about something like this, but it's there. And then transportation, which, until I became a school board member, I had no idea how complicated transportation was. You send the kids outside, the bus picks them up, they go to school. And so I feel like the moving pieces in this situation, and the fact that the district, along with Mike at Transportation, have looked at all the different scenarios, knowing that we need to get our high school kids more sleep. We have to. And that the science says largely that for elementary kids, for, and again, it's science, so it's most, not all, it's better for them to be up in the morning. It's completely imperfect, but it's, is this the solution, out of all of the imperfect solutions, that will help move our district in a direction that will support our kids and families? This makes me nervous for my own family, but it's not, it's not about my family. It's about, we've got 8,500 kids in this district, and it is our responsibility as the board to make the best decision with all the evidence possible, which in this case includes families' lives, kids' education, budget, transportation, and science. So you're right, Ms. Thompson, this is super hard. But I think we need to think holistically on this one. And I also want to say, I have read every single email, and I know that sometimes, community members could get frustrated if they don't get an immediate response. I promise you, I read every single email, sometimes a couple of times, to make sure that I've got it. So please be assured, anybody who is listening, just because you didn't receive a response does not mean that I have not read every single one and taken that all into consideration.
Thank you. Dr. Neumaster?
Well, it is a very difficult decision. I do agree with Angela, and I do believe there's a big equity part of this. And yes, we look at the whole, but our little kids are almost half of the whole, and they are the ones most impacted. The science is with teens, circadian rhythm changes, and they want to sleep later, they do better, and there is science there, and we've known that for the 20, 30 years I've been in, was in the high school system. But wouldn't it be nice if our older kids could start later? And we've got some information saying that the sleep patterns of younger kids are more malleable. Not that they need less sleep, but it's a little easier to get them to bed early. And our families are saying, "But we want to see our kids at night, too. If they're getting up at 5:30 to get on the bus, or 6 o'clock to get dressed and fed and on the bus, then do they have to go to bed at 6 o'clock, just as I'm getting home from work?" So, I mean, it makes a difference, I don't think it's giving anyone preference, and no one is selfish in saying, "Oh, only it's me, me, me." But the reality is, elementary kids all need somebody at home, and daycare is a big piece of it, and it's not selfish to look at how many people can't afford it. I just think that was a piece of data we needed to know, what percent of our families are going to be hit by this. But I guess we don't know that. If we're looking at it through the equity lens, I have a hard time with this, because a lot, it's been a bumpy year, lots of people lost work, they're barely getting back to work, some of them full-time, and a lot of these emails that you've all read said, "Please don't do this this year. Give us a longer runway." And the decision may come from the board and administration that we don't have a long runway, this is the only solution we could see. But then the reality is, that solution is the cost of that solution. So, I don't know, there is no easy way. It's like your own budget, maybe you sell a car. I've done that. But you got to find the money someplace. So I'll leave it there, but it is equity.
Thank you, Dr. Neumaster. Mr. Chapman?
I, I don't need to at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Ms. Thompson?
Just one little addition, is, when they, when we say the science is there, we all keep saying, "For the high school students." I completely agree. I just feel like we could flop the middle school and elementary, and we could solve this problem. To me, that's how I see it, because I would hate to do this, and in a year from now, or two years, or three years, it needs to be corrected, because it doesn't work. And, you know, like Marge just pointed out, there were many emails that came in, and the parents said, you know, "I understand that this is..." You know, whether they were for it or against it, and most of them were against it, they, they did say, "Just give us a little more time to process and figure this out, so that we can be on board with it," right? When we went for the bond, we worked for a year. Well, I shouldn't say "we," I should say, there are people, I know Wayne went to, I can't even tell you how many meetings I saw him at, it was amazing, the work that, that the district did to get that to happen. This is a big decision that will impact lives, and, and whether it will, what way it impacts those lives, and how the difference is, it will make an impaction. And I feel like we, and I know we don't have time, so again, I don't know, I guess I'm just rambling. I'm, I just feel like this is, it's a big decision.
Dr. Kasmercheck, is that a scenario that you guys looked at?
Uh, switching to middle school and elementary?
Yeah.
Well, that wouldn't, that recommendation wouldn't align with the adolescent sleep research. That would actually move our middle schools earlier, so that, we didn't do that as a viable option. Wouldn't be consistent with the driving factors.
Okay. Ms. Allison?
That was my question.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 that's okay, that's, yeah, that was something that I wondered about as far as middle school, but...
Dr. Neumaster?
I just had two or three parents that said exactly that. "My middle schooler used to be part of the elementary school, they're closer to that, why don't we just switch?" And they wondered what that would cost.
It would, my, my estimate is that it would be roughly the same as what it, what it is now, but again, it would not, it does not align with the adolescent sleep research. So we would be going against what the science says. We would actually be moving earlier. An 11- and 12-year-old's, that's when, that's when the change occurs, so we would actually be making it even worse for middle schoolers, and I won't, I'm not recommending that.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Beloit?
Just to put a fine point on it, we're talking, the change really happens when puberty begins.
Yep.
That's when, so you got your early bloomers, you got your late bloomers, so it's, I mean, it starts in middle school. Okay. That's my fine point, sorry.
Seeing no more questions, we have a recommended action, which is to approve the school start and dismissal times for the 2021, 2022 school year, as recommended. Is there a motion to approve those start times?
No move.
There's been a motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion regarding the recommended, any other discussion regarding the recommended start times? I just have one quick question, Dr. Kasmercheck. So is the vision, after however the vote comes out, right, if it, if it's voted in favor of, is the vision to look at the data next April, and then reevaluate or evaluate to see if we're on the right track, or how is that looking at working?
We certainly will, and I, I've said this before publicly, and I don't, I don't want to overly commit to this, but, you know, if, if, you know, if we can shift elementary a little bit later, and we, we need to get into the year and see how things go, this were to move ahead, we would, you know, we would, we could attempt to try and move elementary a little bit later, perhaps middle school a little bit earlier, but I don't want to overcommit that right now. But once we get into the year, that's what, you know, a year from now, that's what we would be looking at doing. Another wholesale change, I don't, I don't, you know, I would be reluctant to, to commit to that sort of a, that sort of a plan. I think we need to, we would need to give this some time to, you know, to be implemented. And that, that does not change the, you know, again, the driving factors would remain. And so coming back with a, a recommendation contrary to those, I, I would have a hard time doing that here. But modifications within the, within the model, we would be attempting to do, absolutely.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, this will require a roll call vote, because it has financial implications, and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chapman?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mullin?
Aye.
Neumaster?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Arcand?
Aye.
Beloit?
Aye.
With, by a five to two vote, the motion passes. We will now move into our next agenda item, which is the action on the second reading of several school board policies. So because, you know, I can't see anymore, because I'm old, I will say that Policy 417, chemical use and abuse, Policy 522, excuse me, student sex non-discrimination, Policy 714, fund balance, balances, excuse me, Policy 901, community education, Policy 903, visitors to school district property and facilities, Policy 905, advertising, Policy 906, community notification of predatory offenders, and then Policy 910, awarding an honorary diploma. You've seen the policies, they're coming before the second reading. Is there a motion to approve and adopt those policies?
Can I ask a question before we make a movement?
Sure.
Are we missing one from the other packet? Because there was, unless I've completely lost my mind, there was one that related to World's Best Workforce, and... All right, so...
So there was, the other packet?
Did we, did we adjust that in the meeting Monday?
Yeah, we talked about the first reading of all those policies, and I said, "Hey, if you have any corrections or changes..."
Okay.
"...because we were working on timing, that you would please take them to Dr. Kasmercheck, so that he can get it, and then he can get it out through his network to get it out to all of us."
My mistake.
This is not that batch, this is the... This is the second reading one. So these were in front of us last month, they're coming for their second reading this month.
I've just conflated the two things, so, my bad.
Okay.
My mistake.
All good. So you've seen and heard the policies for, coming for the second reading, is there a motion to adopt those policies?
No move.
There's been a motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Arcand. Any discussion regarding that? We will do all of these in one fell swoop, all those in favor of adopting the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hearing no opposed, the policies are adopted. With that, I will thank you all for your continued support of the special session, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullin, I motion to adjourn.
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Beloit. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.